All right, we're moving to 7.8, which is also a public hearing. Considering adopted ordinance number 22-32 approving a request of the City of Granbury to one, amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance pertaining to the addition of short-term rentals. Amendments proposed are to section 4.1, point A, uses permitted by district; section 4.2, supplemental standards for land uses; section 11.2D parking table; and section 12.3, land use definitions; and two, in section two, is amend the City Code, Chapter 4, Business Regulations, Article 4.16, to add a bed and breakfast, comma, hosted and short-term rentals permitting requirement, permitting requirement; and three, amend the City Code, Chapter, Article 6.06, smoking; and Chapter 13, utilities, to revise terminology for bed and breakfast. Kara?
Thank you.
Please.
Sure. So, a little bit of background on this project. In early 2022 this year, staff was directed to prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance for bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. I think everybody came to realize during that research and course of the last several months that our ordinance does need some repair. There's terminology that seems to conflict, some terms that need to be updated, some things that need to be just revised. And not only for our community, but there, you've probably noticed there are communities across the country, locally in Texas, that also have been undertaking this exercise. So, we reviewed what I'll call industry trends, you know, bed and breakfast, short-term rental trends, comparable cities, and we prepared a draft. We took that to Planning and Zoning Meeting on May 9th, presented that draft, and then we went to the community meeting, held a community meeting to hear community input for considerations and ideas on May 18th. Finally, on June 13th, we went back to the P&amp;Z for a public meeting. There was significant amount of conversation, and at each step, we took a review of the work completed and made adjustments as seemed to be appropriate based on the input we received, as well as touching back to that research and other knowledge that we had gained. So, we're finally here in front of City Council. So, a little bit of bed and breakfast zoning history. Generally, prior to 2000, the year 2000, those were bed and breakfast hosted types of uses in zoning ordinances, or you would find them as boarding houses. Typically, back then, zoning ordinances contained distance separations that were quite far to minimize the potential impacts of traffic and whatnot on the surrounding communities. After 2000, there was an emergence of other types of labels for the use, and the use did morph into something more than just a boarding house character. It morphed into something where people went to vacation and holiday. There was a surge in some locations right at that 2000 mark, whereas, beginning in 2004, there was a greater knowledge and advent of online platforms and later commoditization of residential properties. So, that's a big brush stroke on the history of this. Some trending, we see trends of upward numbers and with common operational characters, characteristics. More of them seem to be unhosted, more of them are unhosted. Some communities are experiencing parking problems, unkept properties, noise, party houses, this kind of thing, and an increased call of service and impacts on their city's abilities to provide services. More background, we specifically surveyed eight regional municipalities. There were varied regulatory approaches that we found. No one community is exactly the same, and zoning is typically tailored for the local community to address not only the visions contained in comprehensive plans and other policy documents, but also just the character of the community. Some communities completely prohibit them. Other communities regulate the bed and breakfast or short-term rentals. So, there's wide variation. They can be in commercial districts, they can have use standards, they can be in residential districts as well. Some cities have come to the point of requiring a permit and license beyond just a certificate of occupancy. And I see there's that last statement, the Arlington case outcome found that the use may be geographically limited in a community. So, there's more. And some of these we've looked to as things that we would recommend, such as 24-hour basis for emergency complaints, local contacts available with timeframe of less than and up to 60 minutes. More recently, I did a little bit of research and found that some are requiring 15 minutes for that timeframe. Permit required for each unit, permit non-transferable if owner sells the property or the new property owner needs to obtain a new permit. There are reasons for that. They need to update their contact information, update the emergency contact information, and confirm that the home is, still has those safety features that might be required, such as smoke detector. Let's see. So, there's just a real laundry list of things that other communities have been able to regulate. And finally, a suggestion by one of the recent court cases is that the courts favor regulation of short-term rentals over an outright ban, although we have found cases where they've been banned, or cities where they're banned. So, the comprehensive plan for Granbury speaks to bed and breakfast. There's a couple of statements in it. One has, deals with the lower intensity uses that fit within appearance of single-family homes, such as bed and breakfast or traditional residential development can enhance historic, current historic protections while making the streetscape more complete. So, that's talking about infill, reuse, and rehabilitation of historic areas. And then, the comprehensive plan also speaks to the downtown core as a particular area that could be considered for bed and breakfast locations. I tend to be using the bed and breakfast, but I want to emphasize that the word, the term can be used a little bit interchangeably. So, as we go through the presentation, you'll see where I need to be a little more specific on those terms. This map shows the locations of bed and breakfast, and the chart shows a cumulative SUP. So, you can see that in, sorry to read, but in about the 2008, there was a spike of interest and approvals in SUPs for bed and breakfast. Then it tapered off quite a bit until the last couple of years, where we've seen the majority of the SUPs being approved. And not all of those that are depicted are actually active. This data was assembled in May of this year. When it was last updated, there were four SUPs approved in 2022 and six pending for tonight's agenda. In the existing ordinance, bed and breakfast can be hosted or unhosted, it can be in commercial or residential areas. Basically, it's transient lodging for compensation, and the stay is between 14 and 28 days. During our research, we were finding very commonly that the stay could not exceed 30 days. That corresponds to what you typically find for multifamily residential leases. So, it's shorter than the multifamily residential, and it allows you to go up to that amount of time. And we've incorporated that into the proposed amendment. The existing zoning ordinance also permits to operate in all non-residential districts by SUP in residential districts, so that's by right in non-residential districts. And all of those have supplemental standards, except it's rather curious, the commercial bed and breakfast did not have standards, but there was some confusion on that for whatever reason. So, in consideration of all of this research and community comments and P&amp;Z meetings, this is just a general goals in zoning ordinance and City Code summary of what we're bringing to you. Primarily, our general goals are to bring an ordinance and a code to current practices, to ease the usefulness of the code, make it easier to use, not only for staff, but for the community, for property owners and so on, and to modernize and correct language. At a summary level, revising language, and I'll go through this here in a bit, I'll get to a different slide. And then, creating a new permitting and enforcement section. We don't have that right now for this use. We only have certificate of occupancy, so that's a little different. And then edits for consistency with the proposed revisions. So, this slide shows the types of bed and breakfast existing column and what we would do with that, those items in the existing column, and how they would be allowed. So, right now, we have a term, bed and breakfast hosted. That is, that's not used. The intent is there, but it's not used. It's pretty much the same as bed and breakfast facility hosted. So, when we looked at that, we pondered it, and we said, well, if they're the same, then let's just have one term prevent confusion between the two. And we're proposing the bed and breakfast hosted as the term. We're retaining the SUP in residential districts and permitted in commercial districts. Then you step down to the bed and breakfast facility, unhosted residential, and here's the difference between bed and breakfast hosted and short-term rental residential unhosted. And you drop down to the bottom line, you'll see the bed and breakfast facility, unhosted commercial, is proposed to be short-term rental commercial. Okay? The reason we felt it was important, not only did we receive some community input, they wanted to retain the bed and breakfast hosted term, but it does hearken to the traditional bed and breakfast, where you have your host, you have your breakfast, you have more of a family setting when you stay there, it's a little different. Whereas with the short-term rental, you know, you go there and you stay on your own, it's not hosted. So, short-term rental and residential unhosed and short-term rental commercial. The distinguishing difference there is the unhosted residential is in residential districts, and the commercial is in commercial districts. So, commercial districts is permitted, no public hearing on that, and the residential districts is SUP. On this slide, you see the definitions that are proposed. The first definition there I highlighted in blue is a reminder that staff is recommending to change after Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission asked us for a little bit more work on the definition. But what this is intended to do is define where, what a bedroom is in a short-term rental. So, it's, short definition is an area of a dwelling intended as sleeping rooms. And then, the larger part of the definition says what a bedroom is not. So, we added, the key part of this that was complex or difficult was living room. You know, some people call that a family room, some people call it a sitting room, some people call it a game room, and it just depends upon the property and how it perhaps is decorated. So, we added there in the parentheses what it also could include, but it's not limited to do those examples. The next definition is bed and breakfast hosted. Excuse me. Bed and breakfast hosted is pretty much what it says. There is, you know, it's hosted with someone that lives there and then has people come in and rent a portion of the building. Short-term rental residential unhosed, pretty much what it says too, as well as the commercial one. So, this chart is showing all three of those uses across the top, and then the use types. It gives you an idea of how they compare. In the use table, I already went through the way they would be specific use permit or permitted. The city does have some short-term rentals that happen to be in a light commercial district. So, those are permitted right now, that's how we treat them. They come in, they're permitted. Then the primary occupant, that's been clarified. The length of stay, again, stated 30 days. Number of bedrooms, so the number of bedrooms is different compared to the occupancy. The occupancy is contained in the permit section because that relates more closely to building occupancy. Okay? So, here we have the number of bedrooms that could be located in the various types of bed and breakfast or short-term rentals. The guest and payment, it's a component of the regulation. The meal service is being clarified. I don't think that we've had too much trouble with that the way it is, but sometimes it's located in definitions right now, and sometimes that's hard to find. Additional meal services for receptions, it does currently allow 50, up to 50 guests, and that's for the hosted type. We had some input on how that's been functioning, and the city hasn't had any calls for service for that situation on the ones that are in the downtown area, those that we had on that map. Grounds and characteristics, how to maintain the property, that has a lot to do with the character of the neighborhood, and in summary, that's what that speaks to. So, it stays like a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. Now, for the commercial one, of course, we want to have grounds maintained well, but that doesn't speak to the type of and character of the building. It's a commercial building, or multifamily is in the commercial. Let's see. So, the location, we would propose that we capture that location to a generalized area, that being the historic preservation overlay and the historic compatibility overlay districts. I have a map I'll show you here in a second. The signage is existing as is, it can be one sign, seven feet high, 18 square feet, and I didn't bother to put all the extra information on the table, but that's staying the same. New clarified item is a smoke alarm, and that will accommodate those buildings that are historic, so they don't have to be wired. When we presented to Planning Commission, we had indicated it had to be wired, and it's just not feasible for historic properties. So, they do have to have a smoke alarm, but it doesn't have to be wired tight. Okay? Building type here, building type for the hosted is a principal building used as a dwelling. So, then, short-term rental, unhosted, is a residential principal building, so it doesn't have to be used as a dwelling, that is, the owner isn't living there. Single-family attached structure, which would be like a townhouse, where you have shared walls with neighbor, or a duplex where you have shared walls. In that case, the current code, and it's carried forward, requires a support letter from that adjoining property owner, and if the applicant does not provide that kind of letter, then it has a supermajority approval from P&amp;Z and City Council. Site plan, floor plan is now required. Parking has to be screened from residential zone in the first two categories, and the intent there is to screen the sweep of the lights so that the neighbors aren't disturbed by the light. Commercial properties have to be screened also, but that's a little different, and it's already codified. The term of the SUP, it's void if it's expired, not renewed, terminated, relinquished, or permit is not renewed. They have to get a permit in any case. And then we have parking. Again, the blue shows some change from P&amp;Z. There were concerns about parking and needed to clarify that. So, the bed and breakfast hosted is one space for each bedroom and two additional spaces for the owner or agent occupants. Short-term rental commercial, one space for each bedroom and two additional spaces if the site has an onsite management. And then, the short-term rental residential unhosed, one space for each bedroom, and for new construction of a residential use, two spaces in conformance with section 11284, which is, it contains the garage required and parking space numbers and that kind of thing. That was important for new construction, to not require a historic building to have to accommodate the additional parking. Okay, this is the map I committed to share with you. The right side of it, where the dark pink and the light blue is shown, those are the historic districts. The light pink that's kind of surrounded by the light blue, that's the historic preservation overlay, and the light blue is the historic conservation overlay. So, that's where, if someone wanted to do a bed and breakfast or a short-term rental, it's in that geographic area that this document would require. The left document shows those currently operating short-term rentals, and that's current as of May 9th. There are two on that map that at that time were non-compliant to zoning outside of historic districts, and five compliant with zoning outside of historic districts. If you were to desire to capture those, then that would require a zone change to include the historic districts. If they were not captured into the districts, then they would be considered non-conforming and could continue non-conforming so long as they did not lose that status. Once they fall out of non-conforming, they can't operate. Okay, now we have the proposed City Code is Chapter 4, the Business Regulations. In summary, this is where the permit language is housed. So, they have to go through, they have to get a specific use permit through a public hearing, Planning, Zoning, City Council, and then they would have to go through and obtain a permit from the Building Inspections Office or the office wherever it's managed. So, I'm just going to hit the highlights. We have a permit requirement, which then would require an enforcement and inspections mechanism to assure the permit requirements are followed. There, in that permit section is a occupancy limit, a two-person occupancy per bedroom, and that then you pair up with the zoning code to know what the bedroom is, and we included a definition in the permit section, so that eases that effort. And to allow non-bedroom occupants, visitors to the premise occupancy cannot exceed the maximum occupancy allowed by the permit. So, there's an overall occupancy for that building, and then there's an occupancy for the bedroom, per bedroom. So, someone who rents it can have their own guests come over. You know, if I go there, I can have a friend come over, but they can't be an occupant of the bedroom. Does that make sense? Okay. Trash placement is also a requirement to control and prevent trash from being out for long periods of time. No rental less than 18 hours to try to prevent nefarious activities, and local management within a one-hour timeframe. And then, these other sections were just a, really a cleanup to make sure the terms matched, and we didn't put anything substantial in terms of requirements in the smoking and the other code. So, P&amp;Z Commission Action on May 9th, P&amp;Z met to consider the item and continue to, June 13th, to accommodate that community meeting that we talked about. And then, on June 13th, the P&amp;Z recommended approval, subject to conditions, they asked that the bedroom definition be modified and to clarify the requirements of parking for the short-term residential, and we went a bit further on that. And also, P&amp;Z requested further study related to density of bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. What I can say at this juncture is we've done a little bit of study on that, that it's something that could be undertaken, it might not be tonight, but we would have to do a little bit more research on that. And this is your suggested action. I don't know why I made this so tiny, sorry about that. But what it does, it summarizes some of the changes that were made, and staff recommends approval with the item as presented in your agenda. And these are your voting items. I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing, and I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. And I have Amy Dwight, and followed by Helena Ambrose and James Ambrose.
Good evening. My name's Amy Dwight. I live at 405 Counts Alley. I wanted to say this proposed ordinance does go a long way to meeting the stated purpose, and we really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. We do feel there's still some areas that need to be addressed. It was briefly mentioned, the issue of density. You're limiting geographic area, but there's no mention of density. I really don't understand how we preserve the neighborhood character of residential subdivisions if we don't limit the density of short-term rentals in those residential And I'm not sure exactly what, if there is a process for existing unhosted B&amp;Bs who have SUPs, is there any way for them at some point to have to apply for this proposed new permit so that there's consistency in the standards? Can someone who's currently operating in unhosted short-term rental be given, say, a grace period of a certain amount of time and then be required to go through this permitting process? The other issue is regarding contact person. The new ordinance does require that there be a contact person for each property. We're asking that maybe that contact person information be posted on the city website. These short-term rentals are generally occupied, weekends, holidays, overnight, when the only option, if we have a problem, is to call 911. It seems like there's got to be a better way than calling the police out using emergency channels. And given all of this and the fact that we're considering this right now, as was mentioned, there are six SUPs on the agenda following this. Can we put a hold on these until we nail this stuff down so we all know what exactly is being approved, what the requirements are? When P&amp;Z recommended approval of those six SUPs, every one of them had a condition. Those conditions ranged from paving parking to agreeing to block off up to four bedrooms in one property. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, and I think it would be really great if we could just have these consistent standards applied across the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dwight. Ms. Ambrose?
Good evening. Helena Ambrose, 404 Mary Lou Court. Thank you for all the work that's been put into this. I was at the workshop, and I did appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I still have a question about enforcement. It seems like it's still up to the neighborhoods to do the enforcing. That worries me just a little bit. But the other thing I would like for you, just to consider a general comment about unhosted B&amp;Bs. When we were at the workshop, my neighbor mentioned that she likes to have neighbors, people that we can trust, people that have our back, people that we can count on in emergencies, that sort of thing. And if you have a lot of unhosted B&amp;Bs in the area, then you don't have a neighborhood. One of the ladies said, why in the world would you want neighbors? Why would you need any neighbors? Most of them are horrible anyway. And my thought about that is this, that unhosted B&amp;Bs are not in their neighborhoods, they're in our neighborhoods, and we are the ones who have to deal with it. Please keep that in mind when you're approving SUPs for unhosted bed and breakfast. Just please keep in mind that they don't care about where they're putting them, they just want the money from them, and they are a cash cow. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrose?
My name is James Ambrose. I live at 404 Mary Lou Court. I was just aware of this meeting tonight, so I've kind of put this together really, really quick, so I apologize if I read this rather than know it from memory. In permit code section, there's a language stipulating up to $2,000 fine per day for violating permit requirements. However, in that same document, there's no minimum or at least verbiage included, and I would propose that a very specific language be included that does just that. Furthermore, while it would be, if all the City Council, obviously, you guys would be the ones who would determine what that minimum stipulation is. the ones who would determine what that minimum stipulation might be, I believe it should be high enough to act as a deterrent to somebody intentionally violating permit requirements, believing that they could talk down the fine, or getting it drastically reduced to less than whatever financial benefit they might receive by intentionally breaking that rule. Using the up-to limit as a reference amount, I myself would propose just a $400 minimum pay, fine per day, which is only one-fifth of the up-to maximum that you put in there. In addition, there's no real definition of what local management, it says a local management definition for someone coming in and fixing a problem in the site. What is local management? Does that see somebody out of Fort Worth who can get here within thirty-five minutes or an hour? What if there's traffic on the road, whatever? I would propose that local management means just that. Local management, meaning somebody out of Granbury, which would bring more commerce to Granbury, because somebody would have to do that. Lastly, it's already been mentioned about the density requirement, so I'll skip that one. I do have one more thing I'd like to talk about. In the meeting that we attended, there was a proposal that the city would create a website that would be accessible to the public, so that we could go out and, as a public, we could go out and show the status of short-term rental permits for each address. And this website would include a cross-reference to each address doing businesses B&amp;B currently, and whether or not they're paying the proper hotel occupancy taxes. This would allow the public to inquire whether or not a B&amp;B is operating near them actually as a permitted B&amp;B, because there are many that are not. I will guarantee you, if we wanted to do the survey of this town, we would find at least one, if not more, unhosted bed and breakfasts that are being operated and paying no hotel occupancy taxes, and they should be. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. There may be no more people signed up for the public hearing, I'm going to close this.
[inaudible]
Carla? Well, if you turned yours in, please come up and give your name.
Oh, there we go.
Lou James and Pamela Brewster will be coming.
Thank you, I'm Pamela Brewster, 407 Counts Alley, Old Mill Crossing. I know I've been in front of you many times, and we've talked about this. You've heard several people thank you, I want to say thank you. Thank you. You listened to us, lots of our concerns have been met. The density is not met yet, but I have hope that we can do that, because the density is a huge issue. The overproliferation of these unhosted short-term rentals does affect our everyday lives. As one resident recently said, and I thought it was brilliant, she said, "There are an awful lot of residents here that are people who have retired here, and as you age, you need your neighbors more and more. You rely on them, they're your lifeline." So I want to say, we're the city's lifeline. Don't forget us, the full-time residents. Thank you. And thank you for your new definition in bedrooms, that it can't be a kitchen, or a closet, or something like that. That's fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James?
Good evening.
If you'll introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, I'm Lou James, I live at 407 Counts Alley, and just about everything I had written down has been addressed by my neighbors or my wife. It is a great job. Anyone who's ever worked on any ordinance or regulations can look at that and see the number of hours that had to be put into that. So thank you, you did the city council right, and you did us right, I appreciate that. I would like clarification on one thing, and that is the permit process. I understand for an existing SUP, those SUPs are permanent, and they're run with the land, so they will not be impacted by this. However, I don't see anything in the short-term rental permit that exempts them from getting a permit. My grandfather drove a car for years before they invented the driver's license, he still had to get a driver's license, okay? So, I want, want to be sure I understand, existing SUPs for bed and breakfasts or short-term rentals, they're still going to have to get the new permit, right?
I can answer that, Kara?
There's nothing in here that says they don't.
The answer to that is no, because they are vested under the current ordinances. It's not retroactive in nature, we can't go back to them. Now, if they stop using it for that purpose, or whatever, and the SUP goes away, then yes. And there is a small group of SUPs out there that will continue to operate without that, but it's just been those that have been in the last, what, 2021, Kara?
Right, in the 2021 and part of 22.
Is everything prior to that, the SUPs actually will need to be renewed at some point, some are three-year SUPs, some are five-year SUPs, they'll come back, and then they will be required to be permitted from thence forward.
Okay, so even the prior ones have some time limit on them?
They do.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. James. So, I have no more people that have signed up to speak, correct? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on item seven-point-eight. Look, do council, do you have additional questions that you'd like answered, respond to?
Mr. Mayor? Kara, just a couple of clarifications. There was a question regarding violating the permit, and whether or not they pay hot tax or not. If it's a permitted SUP, and neither, either of those are being followed or met, is it the requirement of the city and the city's action then would be to pull the SUP? Is that the process?
The reason for pulling of an SUP would have to be related to a condition that's attached to the SUP, or the supplemental standards of the SUP, not to the hot tax. The hot tax would need to be paid, if they're in operation. And then the permit, let me, let me check on the permit, unless one of y'all knows right of hand.
Just while you're checking, Kara, it's my understanding that we do monitor for unapproved use in ads and things like that of Airbnbs, just to make sure that they are playing fair, and they are permitted, and that is something we do as a matter of routine.
Right. So, thank you, and, yes, sir. Regarding the hot tax, so that is part of the permit requirement, is hotel occupancy, hot taxes, and request for occupancy history. That section requires that. And there's a penalty section also that was spoke to, of the $2,000 section. So that would be the mechanism to enforce that.
Okay. Just one other question. It was brought up several times this evening, and obviously I read the P&amp;Z document, and that was one of the comments, and they're requesting further study on density. I did want to echo the comment, too, that there's been an awful lot of work done by community development, the community involvement, you know, to get to where we are, and somebody made the comment, the hours that were put in, and I applaud your department, working with the community and P&amp;Z to get that done. What would, what would be the next steps, and are there any legal, you know, requirements or restraints as far as being able to implement something that would address the density question?
Right. So what we would need is direction to do that, planning commission recommended that direction. And then we would need to do a little bit of legal research and case law research comparable, so the same kind of thing that we've already done, and come back with a proposal on the density factor.
Obviously, I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the council, but I personally support that. I think that's something that we should be addressing. Ms. Brewster mentioned that, you know, as we all need neighbors to, that we rely on for help, I think that is something that, as we look to address with density, that we should keep in the back of our minds. That's just my personal opinion, so, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, Kara, can you go back to the slide that has the number of rooms? Right, one more, I think, right there. So for B&amp;Bs, if they have a ten-bedroom house, can they use all ten bedrooms for hosted?
So, for the hosted, they would be limited to seven bedrooms?
What's the reasoning behind that?
So the reasoning behind that is primarily, that's what we, what we require today, that's in the current code. The other thing is that it is a hosted facility, and that's really what was a factor in that, we didn't make any change.
Isn't that also a state law, or some, is there other laws that pertain to that many rooms? No?
Nothing comes to mind right now.
So at this time, if they had more than seven bedrooms, they couldn't use more than seven bedrooms as a host?
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that's, right, that's current.
Okay. And can you go to the parking?
Sure. This one?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, back to the same kind of concept, if, if they had a short-term rental that had seven bedrooms, they would have to have seven spaces?
Correct, for the, for those bedroom, uh-huh. So that's going to be a factor, that some sites are too small to accommodate the parking, which then would preclude that many bedrooms, they would have to have less.
Okay. So even if our B&amp;Bs don't have that now, they have to have it?
Right, correct.
So if a family wanted to rent a house, a four-person, I guess it wouldn't make a difference. I mean, sometimes you have big bedrooms, and, you know, two families share the spaces because they got kids and everything, they only have two vehicles, but that may be something that we may need to look at, because sometimes it's just families getting together for that many bedrooms, and usually you don't have ten or seven cars, but... Okay. And then conforming and non-conforming, can you go over that again?
Okay, so, the SUPs that are conforming would need to operate along with their approved conditions, and supplemental standards and requirements of the zoning ordinance. If they're non-conforming, sorry, thank you. If they're non-conforming, what that means is that they were operating prior to the 2001 ordinance, as an example, okay? Since we're not talking about a specific property. Let's say they were operating prior to the 2001 zoning ordinance adoption, then they would operate in the fashion that they were approved, or were operating prior to 2001.
So, go to that map where you have those two that are non-conforming.
This map?
Yep.
Okay.
You're saying two non-compliant to the zoning?
Right. So one of those, and this is at the time of May ninth, this one that I'm pointing at, can you see where my?
No, I don't see where you're pointing at.
Okay, let me, let me try this. I don't think it's made very clear either, but we'll try it. So there's, there's one right in here, in the center. It never received an SUP, and it was identified as an existing at the time that this map was made. So that's what would be an example of non-compliant to zoning, and not, not having the ability to operate. That one is no longer operating.
So it has to be zoned in what?
It has to, currently, under the current ordinance, it has to have an SUP. And currently, it can be considered through a public hearing, and location can be anywhere in the city. It just has to be proposed, and then it has to be either a residential district or a commercial district, and depending which one, it's either permitted by right, it doesn't need a hearing, or it needs an SUP through a public hearing.
So it can't be an interim holding?
It can be an interim holding with an SUP.
Okay, but it has to have a SUP?
Right.
So how did this one get through the cracks, if it doesn't have an SUP?
This one, someone decided they would just start operating, and did so.
So they're operating illegally without an SUP?
And they're no longer operating right now.
Okay, alright. And fire alarms, can you tell me the fire alarms, wired and non-wired? So, doesn't our current ordinance say that all residential, if you're using updated?
He's gone.
He's gone, I was looking for our building officer. I don't know the building code as well as our building officer might. So I don't think I can answer where you were headed with that, Mr. Rodriguez.
But we can certainly follow up with an answer.
Yeah, I mean, if you're requiring people that are doing remodels now to have wired fire alarms, then it should be the same requirement if they are going to do a new STR or B&amp;B. It should be the same requirement, or if it's not a requirement for them to have wired alarms when they do a complete remodel, then it should be across, it should be the same for either or.
Right. Okay. We'll get that answered.
And I'd also like to follow up on the number of rooms, if that can be expanded or not, or if there's a limitation on that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Reiner?
I know that some of the concerns were enforcement by some of the residents in the neighborhood, and not having to call the police every time. Did any, I didn't attend the community meeting, so did any of the owners of current properties attend, and did they offer any solutions to how to more easily contact them in case of an issue?
As I recall, there were owners that...
There were some there?
As I recall, there were owners present. I don't recall any particular direction on contact. What I can say is staff has been looking at software that would perhaps allow someone to go online and report an incident. I don't know what direction we're heading in, but that is an option we're looking at. It will, of course, very likely depend on some budgetary.
Okay, but it's being looked at?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the other quick question I had was the, the one gentleman was talking about the hour, you know, is that, does that mean Fort Worth, does that mean Granbury? And out, you know, if it's under sixty minutes, that could be anywhere in the forty-five to sixty-mile radius. Is that something that we can look at as well? My question on that is, there are a lot of folks who have either owned properties here, have moved away to work for a while, and plan on, plan on coming back here, but they may not live very far away. I mean, we've had people come through that don't necessarily live right here, but have family here that can look after things. I just kind of want to make sure that that is clear in the ultimate document, how that looks, whether it's local, whether it's Fort Worth, or whether it's just in any given... looks, whether it's local, whether it's Fort Worth, or whether it's just in any given geographical area. If it's under, under an hour that somebody can get to them, that should suffice.
Right. So, we, we elected the hour because that's what, what was commonly being discussed in, in the public meetings. There are some communities that, that, as I mentioned, are, are as, as short as 15 minutes, which gives your emergency service providers the luxury of having someone there more immediately and not having to wait, and, and of course, time is money, right? So, not having to wait for someone to come and, and hope that they've contacted and get there within an hour. So, that is something that, that if you were so inclined as, as a council, you could propose to, to modify that, and, and we would incorporate that as, as you would, you know, including your, your motion or your vote.
Mayor. Just, just a few, few things that we've kind of touched on. One, I would like to officially request that you guys dig a little more into the density. I, I do want to throw a caveat out there with that. I think we all agree, and I apologize for whoever said the comment about the neighbor. I love most of my neighbors. I'm not sure who would say that. There's a few. We'll not get into that, but with the density, I don't, I don't want to completely eliminate the ability to look at a property on a case-by-case basis in, in the context of if, let's just say the density's 60 percent, let's throw an arbitrary number out there, and there's a dilapidated building that may or may not be on the list for demolition or forced, you know, whatever that case may be. If someone wants to come in and step in and take on that project and renovate that property and, and make it new again, using it as an STR, I, I would like the ability for ourselves and future councils to look at those on a case-by-case basis. So, density as a general rule, I think we all have spoken to that at some degree, needs to be looked at further, whatever the legal requirements are for, for something like that. But I, I do think that we need to be able to still have the ability to look at those on a case-by-case basis for specific situations like I described. I, the hour was the other, I mean, an hour's, it is what it is. I think if, if you had a minimum, I don't think you could go below like 30 minutes. And I say that because it takes 30 minutes to get here from Weatherford, it takes 30 minutes to get here from Stevenville or Cleveland. So, someone living that close theoretically could get here within an hour, but maybe someone lives on the other side of Fort Worth may not be able to. So, in those situations, having someone here, local, that can respond a little quicker, I think, would be preferable on all fronts. Outside of that, there, there really weren't, I mean, it seems like you guys did a great job, worked with the community well. I appreciate those of you that sent emails to council, addressing some of the concerns that you had, and then those that were in the decision-making process. We got a couple of those emails, just explaining kind of how they looked at certain things, which is, was appreciated. So, thank you, staff and, and the community for, for working together on that particular issue. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to piggyback that comment and thank staff for all the time spent and the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public that contributed. And council may recall, this was an important goal of yours in your strategic planning exercise that you went through recently, so we wanted to make sure we were on top of it. Fortunately, staff was already working it when you all had that gathering, but we're very pleased they have this first recommendation that's come through, Planning and Zoning Commission. Hopefully, it's something we can, we can, that you all are comfortable moving forward on tonight with the understanding, if you'd like us to look at some other items, we could certainly do that if that's your direction. Thank you.
You, just defined it as the first, right? Which says there can be a second, third iteration to this.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I would also like to see if it's, if it's any possibility for, or if any other communities are doing, like, the, the owners of STRs have to be local. I'm not sure if that's a possibility or not, but see if that's a possible. No? Or, I'm sorry, if, it could be one of the stipulations for STR is that you have to be local, you have to be local.
Can I, can I make a comment on that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
That kind of goes along with what I just said. We've got a lot of families here. We've even had some come up to talk about their short-term rentals, and they own the property here, maybe they've had to move away for a job, keeping the property with the ultimate goal, goal of coming back here and retiring. I think that puts a lot of pressure on people, plus it's a property rights issue, in, in my opinion. You know, whether, if it needs to be a local person, maybe they hire somebody to look after it, but I think that that stipulation is kind of infringement on a property right issue.
You can own the property, you just can't have an STR at it.
Well, I think, like, again, that's, that's a, to me, in my mind, and I'm not the lawyer, but in my mind, that's a property right issue.
Sorry for interrupting, but tonight, we're looking at adopting, considering adopting this ordinance that we have, put here with the changes that we have, which is the result of a tremendous amount of work, both with the community and with, and with staff. This is, you know, gets us to a different place and a different, a different platform. And then we can come back to you at any point in time and make these requests, you know, in a consolidated format, correct? Or not?
That, that would be your election, your, your decision.
Right, okay. But tonight, we're looking at this work that you've already done, and saying, do you want to codify that and get it so that we can move it forward and make a much smaller, more compact document? Yes?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, but if council were to pass what's before you tonight, there would be, we'd publish, and there would be a 30-day waiting period?
No. I actually went and looked in 52013, and it'll become effective based on the provision of our charter, so it would be...
It would be published on Saturday, and it would become effective Monday.
Any more discussion? Based on any, no more discussion, I think I've already closed the public hearing, but do I hear a motion to consider adopting ordinance number 22-32, approving a request of the City of Granbury to number one, amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance pertaining to the addition of short-term rentals. Amendments proposed are pursuant to section 4.1A, uses permitted by district, section 4.2, supplemental standards for land uses, section 11.2D, parking table, and section 12.3, land use definitions. And, parenthesis two, amend the city code, chapter four, business regulations, article 4.16, to add a bed and breakfast hosted in short-term rentals permitting, permitting requirement. And number three, parenthesis, amend the city code, chapter, article 6.06, smoking, and chapter 13, utilities, to revise terminology for bed and breakfast. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, one clarification for the lawyer. If we vote for this and we approve this tonight, will the STRs that we are considering tonight be under this?
No, they will not.
Okay.
It will not be effective until Monday.
So, Mayor, I make a motion to continue the item for clarification of some of the questions that were asked by the council.
Do I hear a second to continue the item? I hear no second. Do I hear a motion to approve or approve with modifications, deny the item?
Mayor, make a motion to approve 7.8 as stated.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Corrigan? Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Vale, second. All in favor approving 7.8, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It's five and one with Mr. Rodriguez opposing.